Hello, everybody. That's very nice. Good. Thank you. Okay, so I'm the Chair of the zoning board. I have to read this statement. This meeting is being recorded. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson, me, at this time. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, subsection G, no person shall address a meeting of a public body without permission of the chair, and all persons shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt the proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting. You're a rough crowd. Okay, so let's take attendance here. So for the record, who's here? David Singer, Chair. Just say it so it's good.
Eric Green.
Debbie Jokes.
Mark Maloney.
Jim Nguyen.
Peter Wilson.
And Eric Turk, our City Planner. Okay, Mr. Clark, would you please read the first application?
The application of Amber Fox for properly located at 808 Colerain Road, Assessor's Map 34, R34 lot 63, which is located in the rural residential RC zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections 200-4.2C1 and 200-8.3 of the zoning ordinance, to allow the keeping of a rooster as a family pet.
And sitting on the panel are...
Peter Wilson.
Jim Nguyen.
Mark Maloney.
Debbie Jokes.
David Singer. Okay, and is Amber here? Amber, can you step forward? Well, the way this works is, as the applicant, you will present to us what you're attempting to do.
Okay.
And then we'll hear from people in the audience, direct their comments to us, and then they ask you to answer some follow-up questions. And then, once we're done, I will close the hearing, and then we will go on to the next matter. Five, with all the decisions, five applications that are proposed.
Okay.
All right. So what are you doing? Where are you doing it? And why are you...
What I'm doing is hoping to keep the rooster that I currently have, but I got on accident as a family pet. I'd gotten chicks from the farmer's coop, and one of them turned out to be roosted. And when the original looked into getting chickens, we had thought, based on what we were doing at the farmer's coop, and generally looking at things online, that we were just allowed to have chickens. And if one was a rooster, we didn't get him on purpose. But it turned out that he protects the flock at this point. He is adorable, hurried out of my hand, he'll follow me around the lawn. He crows, basically, as a rooster. But then it turns out, we were told that you need a permit to have a rooster, and so now we're trying to get a permit to keep the rooster. They have a coop and a run that's away from property lines. I think there's a drawing, but I suppose...
You did, thank you.
And they stay in the coop, and let's see, our home on site will let them out. They don't get free range if we're in our homes. They'll pretty much stay in the lawn, and he keeps them, you know, he's already protected the flock from a fox at this point, and so we just, we'd like to keep him because he's ours, and we like him.
Okay.
That's really all I've got.
So the zoning ordinance that you're referring to is that if you have property under five acres of land, then you need a special permit to have a rooster on your property?
That's what we now understand.
Okay, so that's why you're here?
Yep.
So my, the most obvious question is, you have a rooster crows in the morning, but you have a letter from your neighbor that the rooster crowing is disturbing to his peace and quiet. Can you talk to the board about what you intend to, if you were given a special permit, and the condition was that you have to keep the bird quiet?
Well, we had already taken some steps. There was originally a light that came on in the coop, and it was coming on at the wrong time in the morning. It was helping them lay eggs for an extended period, but we turned that off entirely to try and get him so it didn't crow any earlier than the sun coming up. I can cover the windows. We can attempt to put a no-crow collar on him, which is basically just a scrunchie around his neck. I'm not sure what else one can keep a rooster quiet, but we can attempt to keep him in his coop and keep it dark in there, because they usually don't start crowing until they're either disturbed by noises outside or the sun comes up. And I mean, I don't know if it helps. I've taken recordings of him with a decibel meter. It's just not that loud, like, doesn't really get over at the distance from his coop to wherever our closest neighbor's house is. Doesn't really get over 70 decibels. It's no louder than traffic. He's quieter than traffic. And so I understand that he makes noise, but I don't see that he makes more noise than the rest of the environment, including the barking dogs and other people's roosters in the neighborhood.
One more question before I let it go. Has there been anything that you've done that has been proven to keep the rooster quiet?
When we... Last year, when we had covered the windows in the, when the, when the sun comes up earlier in the summer, we had covered the windows somewhat, but we had taken it down because the, it had gotten too hot, and I didn't want to leave too much dark covering over the coop. He was, as far as I know, crowing later. At one point, when we had spoken with my neighbor, we had said, you know, is he crowing somewhat quieter? Is he crowing, you know, less or later? And she had texted back that yes, it had been quieter for a while. So...
Okay, anybody else have questions?
I'm sure I could have done the calculations myself, but how large is your lot?
I think it's, Mark, is 1.68 acres.
It's far from five.
Yeah.
Yes.
And how old's your rooster?
Four?
Four?
Four, four in March.
Okay, thank you.
So the rooster's been on your property for four years?
Yeah, we got the chickens during pandemic.
So what led to you coming for a permit at this point?
Because somebody showed up to my house and said that I had to.
Someone showed up at your house? Was it your neighbor?
No, no, it was the animal, the animal police.
Any other questions?
You had commented on there being roosters, other roosters in the neighborhood. I believe there's a farm right, right next door or very close to.
There are many farms in the neighborhood. We live in the meadows, and so there's cows, and there's other people with poultry, and...
What's the expected life of a rooster?
I couldn't tell you.
Five, five to eight years.
Five to seven years, yeah.
Yeah, and he's not, I mean, he's not gonna, he's kind of, he's kind of geriatric already at this point. I don't, I don't expect him to be a 20-year pet. And I don't plan on getting another.
Without coming before us?
Right, absolutely.
Anything? Okay. All right, you can stay there, please. Anybody here want to speak to this?
I do.
Okay, could you stand?
I just, just so you know, I, I'm a neighbor. The last thing I want to do is have bad relations with my neighbor.
Before you begin, I know you want to begin. Please state your name and your...
Oh, Don Oldford. I live at 818 Colerain Road.
Thank you.
And the rooster wakes me up almost every single day. He starts crowing between 4:30 and 5:30 a.m. They have a house right outside of my bedroom window. And he curls on and off all day long. And it's just very disruptive. It's hard to enjoy my property. It's hard to be outside. And he's waking loud. I have recordings. Thank you. But, yeah, so it's just disruptive, and it's all, it's all my personal.
Has this been going on for you for four years?
Well, it really started, I started to, it started to bother me. I didn't realize that I had any rights. And so we started talking about it two years ago, and so then I'm going to change the season sign.
And, and if the rooster was quieted, would that, would that work?
If the rooster didn't make any noise, it's...
It would be tough. It's the noise.
It's the noise. I don't care about it because it's the noise.
Do you hear any of the other roosters in the neighborhood?
No.
Chair, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Do you have any sense of if the, like, I see where the coop is in relation to your property. Do you have any sense that if the coop was far away from the property line in the other direction, that that would be sufficient to abate the noise? I get that this would kind of be like an assumption, but I'm just wondering if your amenability would change if there was an agreement to just move the location of the coop to the other side of the property?
I, I wouldn't care, like, I don't care about that. Put it outside of her bedroom window. Yeah, a little bit. I don't own this a lot from him. But moving it would be great. It's all...
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else want to say?
I'm, I'll just, I'm just...
I'm sorry.
First, my first.
Hi, guys.
Eight, eight, 44 Road. So we're two houses down, and I'm just here kind of to support both neighbors. You know, Dawn is a nurse, and I know when she comes home, she's tired. So I know sleep is very important, and which is not something new, you know, she's, she's kind of been in there for quite a while now. On the other hand, you know, obviously, we're in an area where there are lots. On the other side of the, their home, somebody now has, probably, what have you, that also we can sometimes hear. We don't, we don't hear the rooster a lot at our house, but, you know, we're a little bit further down. You know, there are, I do hear some other roosters. I do hear the ducks on occasion, though. But again, I am sympathetic. I know where the prior owners had put that coop, and it is right on the property line next to, you know, closer to Dawn's house. So honestly, if anybody's going to hear it, she's going to hear it. Because her bedroom's on that side of the house.
Is the neighbor from the other side here?
I don't think that one was there.
Yeah. Okay, I don't think we got a letter. The person we got a letter from was... Her...
This person. That's from her.
Okay, oh, Dawn, that's you.
Yes. But the, the letter that the applicant submitted did note a quote from the neighbor on the other property line at 794, saying that she loves the sound of the rooster.
They also have Dawn. They spend notes.
So what's a rooster? Mr. Chair, could I ask the follow-up question of the applicant?
Sure.
Would you be amenable, or would it be physically possible to consider relocating the coop?
It would be very hard. We've dug, we've, we've laid a whole lot of hardware cloth and dug a whole lot of stuff there to keep foxes from getting in. And so, and the coop itself that's attached to the run is, we would need like a forklift or a lot of strong people to get it moved. And so it's not impossible. It would just be really, really hard.
A lot of errors. Yeah, I got you. Okay, thank you. The follow-up question.
Sure, please.
I think you're going to continue to keep chickens after the, after the rooster's...
Whatever the fate of the rooster, we will likely, I mean, honestly, if we need to get rid of the rooster, we will, we will, we are not likely to keep the chickens, because they're not likely to, once they bonded with a rooster, they're not actually very happy with that one. They won't really lay eggs as much anymore. They aren't, they, they're really high-stressed, because they recognize that he's there as a protective factor. And so we probably wouldn't keep them anymore. If we do, if we are allowed to keep the rooster, we would be keeping this flock until they die, and then we probably wouldn't be getting any more. It was a fun thing to do. We really enjoy them, but I'm not, I'm not necessarily cut out to be hatching or be, be collecting eggs forever.
One more follow-up question to what... So you can't move the chicken coop, but what about building another coop on the other side?
I mean, I'm not sure about that. It was...
It would be a couple thousand dollars.
It was, it was, it's very, yeah, it was, it was pretty expensive.
We could move it. It would be cost and effort. We could, we could do it. It would take us a while.
Take a while for what reason?
Because we're going to have to disassemble everything we have, and then redig down, lay hardware cloth, reassemble the run, and then move the, get probably five people to move the coop that we assembled in that space. And so it's quite heavy now.
The coop was put up by you guys?
Yeah, so the coop, there, there was existing stuff back there, which we built upon. I don't know if the previous people had chickens there, but it looked like they might have, and that's why we picked that location.
Yeah, they, there's a...
Yeah, it was a dog run, or a...
Yeah.
And then they had chickens.
Yeah, and so we were like, this is all ready for us.
Gotcha. And you didn't expect the rooster, so...
Right, and we didn't realize it's a very rural area, and so we have a neighbor on one side with quite a few animals, and then on Dawn's side, she has a horse farm. So we assumed this space was the space we could have chickens. I mean, compared to what everybody else has got going on in that space, chickens are small and portable and short-lived.
Right, but then you got a rooster.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, as I say, we'll, we'll hear the others, and then we'll wait or come back. I read the quotes, right? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please. And, yes. Be her correspondence, too?
Yeah. There is a memo from the Fire Prevention Office dated July 17, 2024, for the permit at 808 Colerain Road, no comment. It's also a memo dated July 17th from the Engineering Superintendent regarding the application at 808 Colerain Road, no comment. Then another memo from the Department of Planning and Development dated July 17, 2024, same location, no comment. Then a letter from Don, Don Clark to the ZB...
No, that's not right.
Excuse, I'm sorry, that's, that was sent to Don, sorry.
Don Oldford.
Yeah, no, but I'm just saying, this, this memo from, it's coming from me, from Don Clark.
A different Don.
Oh, okay, okay.
A different, a different Don Clark.
No, actually, I think it's the email addresses is this Clark one two.
Yeah, it is.
And then, and so that, so the name that comes up is from is Don Clark, but you clarify who you are in the letter itself.
My name is Don Oldford, and I own a home at 18 Colerain Road in Greenfield, Mass. I am writing in regards to a rooster that is housed at 808 Colerain Road. I have been in contact with the city of Greenfield several, several times over the last two years about this rooster and the noise it produces. The rooster is housed very close to the property, which, property line, which is right outside my bedroom window and close to the screened-in porch. It starts crowing between 4:00 a.m. and 6, excuse me, 5:30 a.m., and continues to crow intermittently throughout the day. This wakes me up, wakes me up on most days. I have owned my home for 25 years and feel this rooster disrupts my ability to enjoy my home, along with making me feel anxious. I deserve peace and quiet in and around my home. I understand that. I understand there, there are city bylaws in Greenfield regarding roosters and which would, which would like, which like resolution of this issue. I unfortunately wasn't able to attach a video recording of how loud the rooster actually is, but I am willing to bring them to the meetings. Thank you, Don. That's all.
Okay. So the next one, can you read the application?
Application of Simone Westorch for property located at 30 Mohawk Trail, Unit B, Assessor's Map 49, lot 32, which is located in the Central Commercial CC zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections 200-4.1D4, 200-8.3, and 200-8.4 of the zoning ordinance in order to allow a medical foot clinic at this location.
And sitting on the panel are...
Peter Wilson.
Jim Nguyen.
Mark Maloney.
Debbie Jokes.
David Singer. Simone. Can you step up carefully? To let you know, so the way this procedure works, if you just got here, was that you, you as the applicant will tell us what's going on. We'll ask for some input from the public. We could go back to you and ask you some questions, and then we'll close the hearing. We'll decide this tonight. Hopefully, it's everybody that we're hearing all the hearings, so we have yours as second out. So what are you doing? Where are you doing it? Why are you doing it?
I'm doing foot care. I've been doing it for three years. I have it in Charlotte, and I couldn't find a space up there that I wanted. A friend of mine had a place in Greenfield, so I'm renting it from her. And a lot of my clients are already in this area. And it's just not, it's a more convenient location. And...
Well, just, Eric, Simone's here because what, what technically qualifies her under the medical part of the bylaw?
So within the Central Commercial District, medical clinics and centers require a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. And this is a foot medical clinic.
Is that how you...
Yeah.
Could you go into a little bit of detail what you do?
I do medical pedicures. I've been a nurse for 27 years, and I, after, I needed to get out of working in facilities, so I started doing foot care, and I love it, and I like helping, like, because a lot of people need foot care. And I do, like, foot soaps, and I make different herbal remedies, so I, you know, put with them. And I cut toenails, file them down, and help with like ingrown toenails, just anything to do with the feet.
Feet is, that's your...
Feet, that's my thing. And education, a lot of education on it, because a lot, there's a lot of diabetic foot care. I do wound care, like, if somebody has, or I guess toe, you know, amputated, they'll come in and I'll do the wound care for them, and I'll refer people if they come in and they have a, they can't see it, like, somebody that I had. I referred him, he went to the wound clinic for like six months, but it's just, it's hair for people's feet, because we're on them all the time.
Okay, that's a great addition to... The building, are you occupying the whole building?
No, there's a hairdresser right across the hall from me. She's been there for a while.
And parking, you have enough space, it looks like?
Yeah.
Two cars in front, two, under your rental agreement, you're allowed those spaces?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Is it just you? There was no additional staff? It's just you providing care? So basically, one client at a time?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
I do have a quick question. I think it's, there's a tenant upstairs?
Yes.
So is that, was that somebody living upstairs, or, I know it was just like another business?
Yeah, and then the two downstairs are commercial rentals.
Anybody else?
Quick question. In terms of parking, there's six spaces. Can you create the roof for your use? What about the people running the salon? Do they kind of share those spaces with you?
Yeah, I use most of the side. I'll use side spaces, and there's more space, like, in the front, but it's just kind of awkward the way that they park. But there's kind of like room for like five cars there, but, but she only usually has one person there, and then I would have one person there, so there'd be plenty of room.
Are you in already? Are you coming to seek this permit?
I, I are. I've been renting the place, but I've not...
You haven't started to do this?
Yeah, no, no, I'm just waiting for...
Anybody else?
Yes.
Now, there's a reference to a 1972 ZBA medical permit decision. What was that?
Eric, no. Eric, you know?
I don't recall.
It's probably for another use. Okay, any other questions? Okay, anybody, thank you. Is there anybody out in the audience? Any comments, anything to say about this application? Okay.
Do you want to ask if there's anybody?
Oh, anybody on the Zoom? Okay. Correspondence? Yeah, is there any correspondence for this? Both factors.
Yes, there's a trans, little memo from the Engineering Superintendent dated July 17, 2024, for this location, no, no comment issued. Or a memo from the Fire Prevention Officer dated July 17, 2024, for this location, no comments issued. A memo from the Department of Planning and Development dated July 17, 2024, for this petition.
And there wasn't anything from the Board of Health?
What's that?
Nothing from the Board of Health?
We haven't, we haven't gotten anything from them.
I'm sorry, just a few. I have a question. I just wanted to get a question. Do you need a license to do this?
I have a license.
You do? Okay.
Yeah, I'm a nurse.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it 6:40? Not 7 o'clock?
Yeah, it's 6:30. 6:00 here.
I see all the people here for the first meeting.
The allies, you know that this is going to happen soon today.
This is a peaceful week tonight.
Yeah.
Finals.
Yeah.
Yes, it's not supposed to be that exciting.
I'm not allowed to start a conference, because I'd be people that want to come. Be fair. I asked a good number.
Eric, do you have stuff for actual back?
Two education centers.
Minor ones, $5, and 40% reduction in setup. Easy ones.
Yeah.
I've handled before.
It's a death when you say that.
It couldn't be with all our...
There is a definition of animal kennel in hospital hours.
Animal. It's a medical game. Gotcha.
Are you looking for...
I just didn't understand the definition of kennels, but I wasn't...
Okay.
It's pretty much more than three hours.
Pretty much, there's animals on a kennel.
No, it's more than three hours.
It's, it's a, it's a...
You're not sure.
It's not about...
The kennel, it's more about the number of dogs. Nothing to do with structure.
But the definition is it's structured use for the heart-brain and character. You're saying, build anything outside, we just want to... The house becomes the kennel. The house is the structure.
People have, or...
Off.
Yeah.
Well, I can't tell you whether you should stay or not, but...
Granted, that does not mean that they are then kind of come up and give information.
No, if you say... If we were here, it would be better than finding out.
Domestically.
And how long does it take?
If the public area in states that was basically said as pets, not as...
Say we're done by eight.
We had a similar case like a few years ago.
And then the first one that we'll think of, we'll work on.
It's confused, like commercially operated or not.
Figure...
Yeah.
All you wish we could do.
If they, you master in a lot of, they...
If you want to get on the Zoom.
And the bodies can regulate it how they want.
Yes. Video and all sound, and you'll hear us.
You never know the things you need to do.
You hear things... You hear things. And with you or something. And plus, if you let me see that you're on there, I might ask you a question.
It's for them before you buy a house.
If you go to, um, city of Greenfield.
Yeah.
Calendar.
Uh huh.
Go on today's date, it's 6:30, you'll see zoning board.
Okay.
The zoning board, you press it, the zoning board agenda. This will come up. And it's just, scroll down the agenda, you'll see a blue link. And if you press the link, you then have to say that the end and things like that. Just for Eric to see you having.
Okay.
Okay?
That's perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks. Hey, thank you. Recession's over. Please. Uh, Mr. Clerk, reading this application.
Yes, the application of Isaac Moss. My product is a question, Isaac.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
For property located at 361 Main Street Assessor's Map 51 Lot 10, which is located in the central commercial CC zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections 200 dash 4.1D4 and 200 dash 8.3 of the zoning ordinance in order to allow the installation of digital poster boards for the garden theater at this location.
Okay. Uh, I just want to say that I am in a, a office next to the movie theater. So I'm technically not. Matter. So I'm gonna excuse myself. I still will lead the meeting, but I will not vote. So having said that, the panel finishes.
Peter Wosniak. Jim Nguyen.
Mark Maloney.
David Jokes.
Eric Curry. Isaac.
Good evening, everyone. I think it'd be good to see you. My name's Isaac Mass. I'm the co-owner, member manager for Tuckerman's Classes LLC known as. I have with me Wu Hail, who's our, my contractor. He can answer any technical questions that you have. I think you all have our architectural drawings. For, um, our plan, our plan has gone to the historic commission and, and gotten support from the historic commission. It's gone to the Community Preservation Act, um, committee, which supported the application. This, this sought improvement plan is being done. With matching funds from the Community Preservation Act. It went through the city council and was unanimously approved there as well, each, at each stage unanimously approved and approved by the mayor. Um, the last step that we have is getting your approval for the digital signage. Um, the, the. Community Preservation Act Committee has asked us to put a, um, deed restriction on the property because of the use of funds. It's a 30 year deed restriction and the language of the restriction is to A, improve the granite, to maintain the granite of the building. And two, to maintain the general appearance of a movie theater entrance. Um, currently while paper posters are available, I can't guarantee that they will be available for the next 30 years. There is certainly a trend towards digital posters. Um, our goal, the drawings were done by Douglas and Associates down in Northampton, who did the Academy of Music. Um, they've also done other plans related to Garden Theater over time. Um, and the instructions I gave them were to take the historic theater and come as close as you can to it without having to redo the whole. Structure. And this is the plan that they developed for us, which includes the, um, digital poster signs because historically there were. Poster boards in, in these areas. Um, the, there were, there are six digital poster boards. They're all at the pedestrian level. They're not, this is not marquee. Um, level signage. They will, they will essentially have poster, uh, digital images for upcoming movies that will be. Whatever the poster is for that area, we will obviously be sensitive to not putting out anything that is, um, explicit, explicit. Um, and I'm happy, there are a couple of issues with topography. I know that's an issue. ZBA has to have the basis. So I want to let you know about that. One is, um, that in 1999, prior to my owning, prior to George Woolen Bill. Go building with the Goldstein brothers owned the property, the town did streetscape. When they did the streetscape, they did not use a lot of care related to the installation of sidewalk. And created a lot of problems, um, breaking some of that granite and creating drainage issues that we had to, um, lift to do some restoration in the front. That's, it created additional problems. That's part of the facade. Program. So that's an issue and, um. We do have a, a issue with people even at the pedestrian level, being able to see the movies that are playing on our marquee. Because of the trees that align both sides of the marquee, we did go through a process to have the city consider taking those trees down. They made the decision not to take that down. So we gladly looked at other solutions. And this is one of the other solutions that we're presenting and we hope that you would. That you will approve it and will happily answer any questions that you or anyone else has.
I have a question.
I have a question, but it's actually not for you. I, I think that it's for you. Why is this even coming before us? In terms of central commercial, is this about the digital aspect, the light projection and signage? Like what? Why is this coming to us for approval?
Good question. So. Recently, the sign regulations were amended to prohibit. Dynamic display signs or electronic message centers.
Okay.
Like, like you see before the fire station unless the amendment says. For municipal use.
Yeah.
Which allows the library and fire department to have their digital.
Gotcha.
Message sign. So this didn't fall into that. Um, if it did, they wouldn't be able to do it, but it, it doesn't. It's different. So we'll put it as used and not elsewhere classified and let the ZBA make the decision now.
Brilliant. That's all I need to know.
Um, I do have, um, a few questions. So, um. Looking through here, it looks like you are doing a lot of just replacing what's there existing with, with a different materials. I think overall the look is going to be. Very much what it currently exists today. I didn't see anything, any specs on what you are, like how bright the digital posters would be. I know when we had the high school come before us in regards to this, their digital sign that they were using. That's one of the things that we talked about there. So. I don't have anything here that can, can either of you speak to that?
Well, first of all, let me explain that these are not the type of digital signs that you see in front of the fire station. Or in front of the high school or in front of the library. There, it's like a TV screen, essentially. That, that's what you should imagine.
It's a computer monitor.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, um, brightness really depends on the poster, right? Something that has a little. Light color is going to be a little brighter than something that has a lot of dark colors. But it's this general appearance that you have on the monitor that you have in front of you.
Yeah. Okay. Um, it would have been good to include that in the documentation so that when we, if we get to a point where we want to approve it, we can say per the submittals. Um, you know. I just want to make sure we're not agreeing to some things without seeing something to what I'm actually agreeing to and then have it come back while you approved it. But we didn't actually see what the specs were. It says it's a computer monitor. And maybe that's in other packages that.
You have.
It's just not on the ones that you were.
So maybe factor of the display cases. Basically just goes to the market when an order is made. It might be an LG screen. It might be the Samsung. It might be. Whatever. So specs like that are not generally. Available as every monitor is going to have slightly different values.
Right, but this at least, this at least shows me what type of. Something to look at and the shame, what it is that we're looking at. I can kind of see here in regards to, uh.
We absolutely anticipated you might add that question.
Yeah.
It's not like the existing static displays in the boiler room.
So would it be safe to say that if the. Movie posters on Main Street were receiving complaints because they were too bright and it's really just a monitor and you could just tap the brightness on the monitor to bring the brightness to the poster?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause it's a, you do it electronically and there are multiple, you today, not for every movie, but for most movies. They give you multiple versions of the poster.
Um, would these also stop displaying at like 11 at night or something? Would you run these throughout the whole evening or?
Probably would not run them through the whole evening. We would. I, I anticipate that there, they can be put on timers and I anticipate that we would run them. Uh, they would shut off when the marquee shuts off. Um, however, they may. We may turn them on when we're not open during the day. Yeah.
Thank you. Quick question. Is there any? Issue with these possibly bothering vehicular traffic going by?
I, I don't believe so. That's the, they're the, you'll see similar post board, so, so similar digital. Um, poster boards at movie theaters that are all on, on streets all over the country. And I haven't heard of any of those complaints.
Functionally, it's going to be identical to a static poster in lit lots.
Okay, yeah.
How, how quickly are the. Posters on display going to rotate? Are they going to flash from one to another to another very quickly? So it'll be distracting or?
Uh, ideally they wouldn't rotate at all. Um, it is, depending on how, what specs come back with, they may want us to rotate two images through and we would do that and it would be a long period of time. We want people to see what we're advertising. We, it's not, this isn't like a digital billboard on the highway where, you know, it's. Taking people's eyes off the road to do it. We want, this is, it's designed for pedestrians who are on the street. You should, in fact, I think it would be kind of hard to see it from the road. Here, oh, here are some examples of. Oh. A picture from another theater.
Even though I'm not voting, I do have a question. Uh, I'll ask Derek first. So I guess. So the way you explain it, Isaac, is that at least for 30 years, you're going to have to do this. It was part of your agreement.
Our agreement says that we have to keep the general appearance of a movie theater entrance. We interpret that as having some sort of poster frame. And one of our concerns is, well, we have an ecological concern of extra posters that we don't need. And a cost concern that's related to the cost of shipping. Um, but, which we don't pay for, by the way, but we have a general concern for our partners. Um, but we have a concern that over the course of the 30 years that studios who produce these, um. These posters may not make them available to theaters and may insist that they have, um, digital signage and, and. Absent this, we would not be able to comply with, we would either. Not be able to comply with the terms of the deed restriction, or we would have empty poster frames, which we don't think would be attractive for anyone on Main Street.
And this is because the industry would stop using paper.
It, it is foreseeable. They have converted from film to digital production now and they're, they're trending that way. I can't say that I think it's going to happen in the next five years, but is foreseeable in the next 50, uh, next 30.
So by saying that, this wouldn't necessarily happen tomorrow.
Oh no, this is going to happen. Well, the digital, the poster frames will be digital from the moment they go up.
But is that happening now or in five years?
The, it happens. They're available now and we would be using them now.
Okay.
Yeah, digital posters that are available.
Yeah.
What's the life expectancy of this? Improvement?
That is a good question and I wish I had a better answer for that. I anticipate in the 10 to 15 year range and they'll likely have to be replaced.
Perfect. Whatever they like to try. This technology is operational and supportable by whoever the developer is.
That's, that, that's a fair estimate. I, I don't want to make a guarantee, but I, I'm, I'm certainly hoping it lasts at least that long. And if we had to replace, we replace it with like kind materials. We wouldn't do an upgrade and want something that was similar.
The monitor in the box.
Yeah.
The box, so.
And you, you take care of this or do you bend it out or?
No, we would, we would handle it internally.
So Eric, in your experience are, what I'm thinking about, and I think Peter noted it, is this is just our job side.
Sure.
Has nothing to do with the integrity of what you're doing. Um, so you have a technology now that we know of, we could condition it on what? On things like, uh, illumination or brightness?
Shut off when a mark.
Timing, things of that nature.
Yeah, the timing of it, like, um, Jim said, yes.
Then, okay, so, but, so if the industry were to change, are we approving the notion of an electronic, uh. Billboard? That can come in any shape or form as long as it's not bright and as long as it. Gets, goes off at 10 o'clock at night.
As it meets those conditions.
So it, we're, we're not, we're not necessarily saying it has to be this technology. It could be a better technology. It could come from a whole different way showing us the billboard, but as long, is, is that what we're?
Well, I guess I'm asking that, but Eric, you know, you, you, you've had a grant or. Money to have the mark or the entrance of it look like a theater. For some reason, this technology or this doesn't work out. What, what's like backup plan to keep that facade looking like a theater?
The backup plan would be paper.
Paper.
But I can't imagine that that will, I, I. I don't know that that will last for 30 years. And if it doesn't last for the 30 years, then you'll have empty poster frames.
But it wouldn't be reasonable to put in a, I mean, I know there's a monitor, but would there be a reasonable ability to take whatever technology? Interface it with something else that still maintains system operation?
We, I, I'm not sure I understand what your question is.
I mean, I, I guess, you know, what you're doing is great and I think this will look great, but you're looking at maintaining a certain level of quality of the facade and this is part of it.
Yes.
But for some reason, this technology doesn't work. What is the? Getting something similar to this.
Yeah. So I mean, digital screens are, are improving all the time. We've gone from, um, from projection to plasma to now L, LCD. And, and I can't say that there won't be a better generation of monitors. We would certainly look for, if we needed to replace, we'd look for the most energy efficient, modern monitor that there was that would give us the greatest control.
The reason I ask, if there's someone who should get a lifetime membership to the garden theaters, my wife and myself.
Thank you.
Hundreds of movies there. And I watched the theater degrade from the renovations that were done many years ago to a point until you bought it, it was on the decline. And, you know, it's great to see it back and protecting it going forward. I think it's, that's the question I'm asking is to not see that. I mean, I've, I mean, I've seen it in my lifetime, but, you know, I'd hate to see regress to where it was before.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And our, I mean, that's exactly what our goal is, is to upgrade the theater to, we, we, we have a gentle balance of. Trying to modernize the theater and at the same time. Preserve the history and the character of the theater. And that's what we've tried to do in this. Project, which is designed to look like the historic entrance. It's not, it's not perfect because. It's impossible to do with the physical alterations that were made, but also to, to modernize it and keep it up. And you'll see. I mean, if you walk out there now, you'll see the facade improvements that are being done. Um. Busca flooring just put in new carpets in the, uh, on the ground level where the tiles are. We're going to be fixing the tiles. We're going to be fixing the general facade. This is, this is just one element of the overall facade improvement. So yes, is your answer, we will continue to keep it up as long as we have ownership of the garden.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Isaac.
You're welcome.
Anybody on the audience want to say anything? You have any, no. Oh, anybody on, uh, and on Zoom want to say anything to this application?
Corresponds?
Transmit a memo from the engineering superintendent, superintendent dated July 26th, 2024. The application of Eric, it's no climate. Random from the Department of Planning and Development dated by 26th, 2024. Same deal, no climate. You know, a letter from Stan Stegeman. Dear members of the Greenfield, Z, Greenfield ZBA, Connecticut River Conservancy is in support of the Garden Theater's application for a special permit to allow. The installation of digital exterior pedestrian signage. We own and occupy the EA Hall Building at 15 Bank Row. The back of our building abuts the side of the theater. See the Garden Theater as an essential part of vibrancy of downtown Greenfield. We fully support their efforts to improve their marketing and business ability. Considered East Stegeman, Operations Manager, Connecticut River Conservancy.
Okay, anything else from the members of the board? Thank you.
One last thing.
Sure.
I, just because I know you may be concerned with conditions. We don't always close at 10 o'clock. On occasion, we might be later. If you want to tie a time, if you could tie for the marquee, which we close down, which is our, that would be very.
Thank you, Isaac.
Hey, Mr. Clerk. Yes, the application of Peter J. Diamond, property located at 309 Poling Road Assessors Map. R26 Lot 10, which is located in the rural residential RC zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections. 200 dash 6.1C, 200. Two hundred dash six point one C, two hundred dash eight point three, and two hundred dash eight point four, the zoning ordinance. In order to allow for the renovation and expansion of the existing garage on a legal nonconforming lot that does not meet current set back requirements at that at this location.
Sitting on the panel are.
Peter Wilson.
Jim Witt.
Mark Maloney.
Debbie Jones.
David Singer.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, Peter. My name is Peter Diamond. I would like to thank you all for your time. I'm at three oh nine Poling Road. I'm interested in removing my existing garage and putting up a bigger building. Longer, couple of feet wider.
Starting at the same point that the old garage is at, right?
That is correct, yes.
Anybody want to, I have some quick. So I did drive by the property.
Okay.
Very clean and looks very new, so.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. So my first question is, and I've gone through this with Eric, so the house looks like it's newly built, but it is?
No, it's new siding. New siding ten years ago. New roof. Some paint.
And the garage is, how old is the garage?
Garage is both the house and the garage are from approximately nineteen fifty two.
Okay.
New siding on both houses either.
The second question I have, which has to do with, so the issue here for the board is that the normal setback for this is wider than what you're proposing.
Okay.
You have a one and a half foot setback for your current garage, and you want to keep that one and a half foot setback. One in one point four two setback, if you want to keep that all the way down where your kids get that setback. I'm not saying that we couldn't consider your request.
Yeah.
Because what you're saying to us in your own words is that this was built before zoning, therefore you already have a garage that's going for forty feet from the property line. You want to expand that garage use.
Yes.
And the test is so long as it doesn't impact the neighborhood, potentially impact the neighborhood. And people here who are complaining about it to tell us that.
Sure.
Then we would be within our rights to do anything. But I do have a question.
For sure.
Which is, why, why wouldn't you put the garage, the the twenty feet setback? What would that do to the project if you were to bring it in more inside your property?
That would literally put that garage in the middle of the driveway. It was there would be twenty feet free space behind my garage that's not usable to me. And it would would really encroach on the.
And what do you do with the garage?
What do I do with it? Park vehicles, meaning to keep them out of the weather. I have a daughter and she has twice. So I'd like to use a bay for, someday she's gonna ideally, what would happen is it would be a bay for myself, a bay for my wife, a bay for my daughter's car someday. And then one bay for lawn equipment. Also, stuff. Or your first garden tools.
It's not like you have a business or anything like that.
I do. I'm a master plumber. I do have a business. I'm in business for myself, yeah. But this is personal, it's all personal.
Absolutely, yeah. Any other questions?
No, sure.
No, I got a question. The the existing garage, the roofs are pitched for the environment, pretty much stayed. I mean, I'm sure they could migrate it to the neighborhood, but the pitch, no, I'll take the student, the pitch is taking the water, sending it over the property line.
Correct. I have gutters in the existing garage that are shedding the water onto the farmland.
So you're taking the water, just now?
Absolutely, yes.
What's going to happen with this? If you do put gutter, that will take it?
It would go to the same place. I would have, I would like to have a shed roof pitched back so that the snow does not come on to my driveway. But so it goes to the back of the garage, which is going to fall on the property line.
Now, the volume of water that's coming off this will be greater than the water that's coming being sent over there that is heavier neighbors. Are they, are they okay with that?
I have talked to both the neighbors. They seem very excited to see me expand my, the use of my property. I think they appreciate the cleanliness of the property. We're on good terms with both Chuck Unegus and Dave Sutherland.
Yeah, that's a question. That's a question I have.
I drove into your yard today. I think it ran into your cones across the driveway.
Sure.
Yeah. All existing farmland behind you, right?
They're there just so, you know, to keep, to keep people from turning.
And I saw the sign on the door, do not disturb, so I didn't ring the door.
Okay, we appreciate that. My daughter naps, so.
Okay.
That's what that's.
But that's all farmland completely behind you. You're not going to be.
Literally, all four sides of me are farmland.
I was there too, at the same time Jim was, but I did not go in your driveway.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Great.
Farm, bro.
Oh.
I figured the farmer wouldn't care.
I tires did go a little bit over.
Yes, we have reports there where people, we actually do go out.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from our audience that wants to speak to this?
Actually, they have them online.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Anybody in line? We're all satisfied with the presentation. Sorry, again, we're in the order. So we have more than we'll take a break. Number one. A, thank you. Yes.
Oh, no, no, I I was just going to say correspond to you. You have your hands up.
I'm sorry, you know, someday I'll figure that. That's what I'm supposed to ask you.
Sometimes I'll be flipping up.
Yeah, just into a.
I'm John Knight. Good, yes, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Transmittal from the Fire Prevention Office dated August seventeenth. Twenty points more for permit, no comments or issues. Memo from the Engineering Superintendent dated August, August seven, twenty twenty four. Again, for this particular permit with no visual comment. Memoranda problems of Department of Planning and Development dated August seven, twenty twenty four. Again, for this property, no issues or comments.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to say on this application?
There's no much left. Of ours, yeah.
Say it seven thirty. Clerk, please read the next application.
Application for Kimberly Zabak for property located at two nineteen High Street, assessors map ninety two lot twenty three, which is located in the urban residential R A zoning district. For a special permit pursuant to sections two hundred dash four point four, two seventeen, two hundred dash eight point three, and two hundred dash eight point four, the zoning ordinance to, in order to allow a, and kennels to keep four dogs as pets at this location.
And sitting on the panel are Peter Wilson.
Jim Witt.
Mark Maloney.
Debbie Jones.
David Singer. Okay, Kimberly, can you come up, please? So what are you doing? Where are you doing it and why are you doing it?
So we live in Greenfield on High Street, and we had three dogs. We have two older dogs, eleven and ten. They're smaller, medium sized dogs. And then last year in December, we got a golden retriever puppy, and she'll be a year in October, and I'm obsessed with her and I love her. And she has golden retriever energy. So we, because we know we have our older dogs, we know that they're going to expire. We got another puppy and a golden retriever so that he has matched energy with her because she, so we have a an eleven year old Dotson Beagle mix. He's, we call him a T Rex because he's got little legs and I think I put a picture on of all of them sitting, but she's, you know, always trying to get Charlie, and so we figured a puppy around her age will be good matched energy for them to grow up together. Our family pets, I I'm doing the right thing presenting in front of everyone here so that we can, we're not building a kennel or anything like that. They're all spayed, neutered, and so Arlo will be the same. We love him and we love all of our dogs. They go, our two older dogs are lazy. Their house, they love to be in the house, couch, potatoes. And then our golden goes to daycare twice a week in Greenfield, and Arlo will do the same thing. And then we have a dog walker that comes three times a day, three times a week while we're at work, and the days that for Arlo right now, because he's on three times feeding, I go home at lunch, feed him, because I live, I work in South Deerfield for Greenfield Savings Bank, so yeah, they're just our family pets and.
That's why. Any questions?
Uh, your letter answered one question I had already. Your dogs are indoor dogs.
Yeah.
And they're never outside alone.
Never.
So there's not going to be a kennel built in your backyard.
No.
And they're only doxins, right?
So one is a cocker spaniel. I have a picture if you'd like to.
Yeah, it's on here.
Yep. So two are goldens, and then we have Charlie, who is Dotson Beagle, and then Haisley is a cocker spaniel, so they make up one though.
Sure.
I mean, they're little. And we've got Olive, she's going to be a year in October, and then Arlo, three months to bay for this month, so.
Really, any question?
Yeah.
So I appreciate that you're just kind of staying within the letter of the zoning ordinance and just have the pets that you want to have. I've got a couple of your pets are getting older. I'm wondering if you would be amenable, if if this was to be granted, I guess my I just want to be sure that you're not going to end up with eight dogs in a year.
Yeah.
And so would you be comfortable with the granting of a permit if if the board was to vote in favor of it, that kind of limited it to four dogs?
Four dogs is yes, yes.
You're just asking.
Yeah, two golden babies are and
Like a lot of dogs.
A boy and an eight year old son. Yeah, absolutely.
You did. Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Good point.
And and also, I'm sorry, they're never outside by themselves, and like if we do bring them outside, we have like one of those tie outs to play. You know, I'm happy to like buy one of those little like fence things for dogs, but you know, they're never out, we we live on a very busy street, so we would never let them out.
Yeah.
Thank you. Your intention to have four dogs. Say if one of the four dies, you've got, you've got to count.
We've got three, and I'm never going to get it. No, we would not get another one. No, no, no.
Down to three, it stays.
It stays at three, yeah.
Or you'd have to come back for us again or something.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it depends, and I I think I have some neighbors here, and and I know that are, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I have some supporters online as well, and they've written some letters that, you know, they don't mind. And some of our neighbors, neighbors didn't even know that we had four dogs because the two are like really homebodies, so.
So I think the word kennel is a triggering word.
Yes, I I totally understand that.
And the way that the law works sometimes is there are these artificial boundaries that exist, so three dogs is okay. You can have them in your house running around doing all the destruction they want, but once you get the fourth dog, now all of a sudden they have to come before the zoning board. So I think it's important, before we take the the neighbors' comments, just to draw you out a little bit. Do you have any spots on on this plan?
Yeah.
It it made me feel as though you were going to put some fencing on your property.
Oh.
But but that's not what.
No, Eric had told me, because he helped me, because I didn't know what to do. And so like I said, this is where we take them to go to the bathroom or potty or.
Right, but you can still walk them like everybody else does.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. I thought you needed to know like where they're going to be. That's what my understanding was.
That's if that's what you were showing, then for the record, that's that's saying. So in essence, instead of three dogs in the house, as your, as your family dogs, you're having, you want four dogs.
Yeah, four.
Okay, so it's not a kennel, you're not selling them, you're not breeding them.
No, they're all spayed and neutered.
It's just one dog above that the definition.
Yes, and I didn't realize that until someone on Facebook had mentioned it, so I went on to your site, the city of Greenfield. And I just, I honestly, I did not know that any of this, and I explained to Eric, it said, it was deceiving on the website. It said, anything over three dogs would be a fifty dollar kennel license. I'm like, okay, that's not a big deal. So I clicked on the planning department. It brought me to an email to Eric, so, and he said, oh, no, it's more than that. I was like, oh, okay. So this is what I did, yeah.
And you would understand that along with the questions that were asked of you, that if you were to be granted four and it went down to three, then going back, it's worth the, for one, any, I I don't believe any permission that you would be given would be allowing you to continuously have four down. And the second would be that it wouldn't be something that was a attached to your property. It would be more that we were thinking of it as, this is one of those situations where the number three in the zoning ordinance may be an arbitrary number, and maybe we could, with the number four, as long as things
Yeah.
remain the same as a number three would be.
Exactly.
Okay, all right. So I think that would be the guy, the goal, and I'll be looking at some others, but so everybody, so that that you understand that that's that's acceptable to you.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so now it's Kaylee?
Kelly.
Kelly?
Le.
Okay, I'll.
Hi. I'm actually, I'm Les Benazra, Kelly is my wife. I'm the across the street neighbor of Kim and Jen and her fabulous family. And I just wanted to speak to, I believe Kelly already submitted a letter to the board. But I wanted to also just speak to the fact that these are absolutely family dogs. They are pets. There is, you know, nothing else going on here. My sole complaint about the puppy is that I don't get to play with it enough. The dogs are incredibly well cared for. We never hear them. Our teenage kids have taken care of their dogs when they have gone away for the weekend and their house is immaculate, and all of those pieces, I think, just from a neighborly standpoint, absolutely no concerns. And they're a wonderful family, takes really good care of their pets, and these are absolutely household pets. Yeah, so that's all I've got, but yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else on Zoom want to speak? Can you folks want to speak? Only because I don't think I could turn my head this way again.
Okay, so no, I, we we got this letter asking us that we could come because of this issue. We were neighbors at two ten highway streaming. We didn't really know what, what the issue involved, so we just heard right now. We feel a lot more clear and ease. We we're certainly understanding, we have a dog ourselves, one dog. We certainly understand, you know, a lot of dogs and. we have a dog ourselves, one dog. Uh, we certainly understand, you know, a lot of dogs and how that can be something very important to people. And we certainly don't want to rain on someone's parade. Uh, we just came because we didn't know what the word kennel meant.
Very loud. Yeah.
And that, like you said, it is a triggering word. And we just, what's happening, you know, I've lived in a situation, not where we are now, but in the past, where dogs have been very noisy and a lot of them, and it can create, um, you know, a deleterious effect on neighborhood. But this doesn't seem to be at all the case. So I don't really have questions. Um, we just, I feel, I think we feel a lot better hearing what the situation is.
Good.
And, and I agree with you, uh, because it was a triggering word. And I took Arlo for a walk today. And is it Riddell Street next to Hastings?
Yeah.
Um, there was an elderly woman out, outside and, and she's like, oh, can I pet him? So I, and I figured she would have gotten the letter. So I introduced myself and she's like, I'm all for a kennel. If you need a kennel, I was like, no, 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 no. Like, we don't, we don't. But, you know, people did not understand what the letter was. And, and I think it was a little deceiving.
It, it was a little bit alarming, kind of. And I don't think, I don't think you can, it was just unintentionally.
Yeah.
There's your section of the quote.
Right, right. It's no one is enough. But, um, no, I don't really have any, you don't really have any questions. Thank you.
Yes. Please introduce yourself and your address.
Hi, I'm Nancy Keefe at 230 High Street. I have the pleasure of providing to what I tell people. I've been here less than two years. I call it the Fifth Avenue dog walking. You know, every morning at 10 to six, when I, my two golden retrievers wake me up as they've heard the college dogs go by. There's a lot of dogs. The situation, and I'm very grateful what David said and what Kim shared. And David, in reference to that this would not be glued to the property going forward. There has been a neighborhood tsunami. Whether it's inept on the planning, on the zoning commission, you're talking about kennels, you're talking about, uh, this was, this came from the planning office of March 20, 2024, page three, animal kennel or hospital. Structure used for harboring and or care of more than three dogs that are more than six months old, whether commercially operated or not, except for farm dogs used for herding or protection of livestock from predators. The neighbors, now I have a gift to be in this intergenerational neighborhood. It is truly a gift. There are people there for decades. Nobody wants to come down here and talk. You know, I've lost sleep coming in that walk in. I do recognize Kim. It's hard to come in and say how you're feeling. And I did, um, send a letter today that I would not support it based on the vacuum, vacuous information that Greenfield zoning does not supply in reference to what they are returning to his kennel. People are worried. I'm worried. Is there a minimum acreage that somebody needs to put a kennel up? What is the size of a kennel to be? What is the fallback from a neighbor? The minute I received the letter, my, my antenna went up and I said, I know why, as they properly did to submit for licenses, three or four licenses. I said, that was the red flag. Now their town's saying they need a kennel. Then the next person was the exact next to our neighbor. You know, this is a neighborhood that goes out when there's an ambulance out, that bakes for somebody who's had shoulder surgery, whose electricity was out last week. And we're helping, you know, her, we help one another. But this has set up a tsunami. People have been emotionally, psychologically, financially, what is going to happen to my property if this is granted? And it's now called a kennel. And what does that do to my property or their property? And I'm talking for anybody else. But I've really been fascinated. I walk by about 10 times a week, the corner here of, um, I'm not going to call it Fifth Avenue, no part, no pathway. Now I call it Park Avenue up there. But it's a beautiful neighborhood. It's just gorgeous. But it was a real dilemma and the lack of information that was provided to all of anybody who received as an butter was really fallacious and deceitful and alarming. And you can see it in my face. That's what's happened in the neighborhood. And that's not fair. Somebody on zoning really needs to revisit what information is being put out because this was not justified. I can't tell you how upset people have been. And that's not fair to Kim's family. So I, and I would like, I did submit a letter that I was told by Eric this morning. And thank you for the follow up phone call, Eric. I was hoping to get that letter out to you yesterday. But it, it is alarming. It is concerning. And I have been very interested and cautiously following the news in Greenfield. The changes in zoning are happening like this, for the ideas to change zoning, from the cluster housing to the trailers, to the CSO, you know, con- conflicts now. And the decisions are being made extremely rapidly. And now I'm wondering, you know, I'm trying to support a more mindful community. We have the new mayor at the helm. And by the way, it was extremely unprofessional for somebody in the zoning office to tell one of my neighbors, well, you know what? The ex-mayor signed off on a yes for this. That is unbelievably unprofessional. All of us have a say in this. And so to single out one individual's name to have some kind of credence that that's okay, it's just not okay. So please come together as a community and be more collaborative and more careful when you're sending something to people who live side by side. We sit and have their coffee in the morning and we all see one another through our curtains or whatever the blinds are. So I don't know what I would do without my pets. I don't know what I would do. So I just thank you for the time.
Good question, Fordy.
Sure.
Glad. Now that you've heard what she intends to do and what the zoning board will likely do, are you supportive of her having the fourth dog?
Yes, based on, with a little bit more.
Do you have anything that you want to add in that regard?
Other than to clarification, when you said that it wouldn't go along with the deed or wouldn't go along with the property, that was, that was the other big trigger. But people, we didn't have that information.
Yeah.
We didn't have it. So I appreciate you asking me.
Yeah, go ahead.
Excuse me, Nancy. Here's the letter you sent.
Yeah.
Pet, what have you, what you said verbally, does that?
That's correct.
So.
Well, but what also was shared this evening by, uh, Kim, which I believe that that's truly what was coming from, that these were truly pets. But would, would this, would, would going forward put into precedent, somebody else in the house, then being able to o- open up an animal kennel or hospital? Whatever words are coming out of the office really need to be updated, really. You know, it's great that you're all here. It's to be doing this work. It's really active hands on work and it's, I can see that it can be exhausting to keep processing these meetings. So.
Could I ask a quick follow up question?
I'll, I'll let you have it. Go ahead.
Well, it, does the definition of kennel refer to a structure at, outside the house in which dogs are kept? Or is it simply anything above three dogs? I, I'm a little bit confused.
Simply above three dogs.
It could be indoors.
Yes.
The structure could be the house.
Could be the house.
Just the dwelling is the structure that is now housing more than three dogs inside.
I see.
There's a hand up, Mr. Trump.
Are you all set here?
No, I, I, I'd like to.
Go ahead, Mr. Trump.
Could I, could I read Nancy's letter while she's in process?
Sure.
Just to kind of.
Everybody will get a chance to speak, by the way. So just.
This is.
Stay tuned.
Hello, I am writing to bring your attention and consequent action regarding my neighbor to modify current zoning ordinance. Please read the attached. I have not been successful on my own to obtain through my research online, except acreage, exact acreage per lot, setback boundaries from a butters and dimensions in terms of both interior and exterior kennels allowed slash required for four plus canines. I need this information. Please assist. And then this says, in addition, these are my most pertinent issues. Will the proposed be labeled and designated as an animal kennel? Such name remain on the property for perpetuity barring a lawsuit to, to revert. Two, specifically, what are the requirements for indoor kennel, quote unquote? What does that, what does the nature of an indoor kennel mean? Please specify the dimensions. Are there separate, three, are there separate designations for indoor and outdoor animal kennels? If yes, what are they? Four, what are the maximum number and ages of canines permitted in an animal kennel slash booth, interior and exterior kennels? Let's do the both. Five, what is the role of the animal control officer in regulating such a potential animal kennel? I do not support an amendment to the current zoning to qualify the real property at 219 High Street, Greenfield Mass. successors map R26 lot 10, as indicated in the attached. Counselor Minhas is aware of my request and has received similar notice from me. Have you addressed all these that I'm reading here? Or is there anything else that needs to be?
Between what you said and what he read, are you, are you that a hundred percent?
I'm cool with that, but I also want to say that the health of property is immaculate. That, you know, there's nothing about maintenance that, um, fearful, the fearful was going forward. I am not familiar enough with appeals and zoning and what sticks and what doesn't stick and what's grandfathered in and not. My concern was not the, the, the pets that are there now, very well taken care of. It was the being vulnerable to having a designation of that trigger word. And, and what that might mean if somebody came and were, had a kennel.
But it appears what you verbally said before and what I read here are coinciding with each other.
Yes, but I'm cool, I'm fine. It works well. The information, the information was from David and that was that this would not carry forward on the property.
Well, we have to decide that, but I, but my point is, you're now, you're now providing input to us. And I, I asked Kimberly, if, if we were to find one, two, three and four, is that in line with what she wanted? She said, no, I would have probed her. Then what do you want? She said, yes. So understanding, I didn't know who you were in person, but I had read your letter, understanding the concern, I figured we would get to the point right in front so that when people spoke, they at least understood that it's not, it's not what you thought it was.
Correct. And I need to reflect back and share this predicament and then I get emotional. The lack of information put out to us.
I want to, I want to address that, but I want to let everybody, I'm going to address that.
As an alarm.
I'm going to address that. I, I, I'm empathic to what you're saying. And I just want you to understand how it works from this side and what you can do to make it better. All right. I just.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Yeah, I saw Nate, but anybody else here?
Well, I, I'll say something. I'm in the.
Wait, wait, hold it. I don't want to reference you. Go ahead.
Okay.
I, I don't mean to be rude. It's just that she, there's some people. What name and?
I need to person all right, move next door to Kim.
Okay. And I did write a letter of my concerns because my first concern was, Kim, at this point says, I'm not building an outside kennel. It's so third up. A lot of that makes you change your mind and there would be kind of go because their property doesn't have a backyard basically, but it's the front and the side. The side yard is, but it's kind of my kitchen window. So I don't think Kim is going to build a kennel. But then it ran into my second concern, which was perpetuity. If it sold the house, will this kennel license go with the house? What's someone else buying the house and building it outside the kennel, right outside my kitchen window? So I think you've like addressed those concerns, but I'm feeling like some of these concerns need to be attached to the permit only for our neighbors, me especially, its neighbors' safety of their property, like that it will not set a precedent that Kim will not ever have the chance to change her mind in building outside kennel. So that is just my.
That's, that's why we asked you to come and speak with us. Okay. No. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, I, I live in Alice Timmons and I live around the corner, 106 A1 Street. And these were the two primary concerns that I've been hearing. It's, that's nothing to do with the individual, but there is, I mean, I looked under the animal control section of the zoning and the parts of the zoning that you had. I looked at mass general law. There really is, like, and that's generally actually defines a kennel differently from how you guys stated it was defined. So very ambiguous what is quote unquote kennel. And it's not just the town of Greenfield, in my opinion. It's a little bit ambiguous office. And, and, and what I understood was the only advantage to having it be quote unquote kennel, kennel is under mass general law, the animal control officer has the right to go in any respect. Well, that seems to be the big part of the attach under mass general law. And I didn't see anything that refuted it under the state law, which, which kind of protects the animals and the neighborhood if it gets loud and noisy. But I'm just saying, there was not a lot of information. That's all. And I can understand if I was in a butter, I, I'd be a little nervous. I, I don't think it's, and it's not this group's fault. It's just not really spelled out.
Yeah, no, I think we.
And, and, and she, I'm not sure she even needs to be called a kennel. Like, she just wants to have another pet and be like a regular pet. I, I'm just saying, it, it's almost like the kennel should be in quotes because it's not really a kennel application. It's just going through that process because that's the easiest way to deal with it. Something like that.
Understood.
Under, it doesn't make sense.
Understood. Does. Thank you. Because Nate?
Hi, um, I'm Nate. I'm on Riddell Street. Um, I'm just going to echo what a lot of people are already saying that we got the, I got the letter and I was very concerned. Like, I also lived in places that had dark barking dog problems. Um, and it was pretty, pretty, um, intolerable. Uh, but after hearing what is really happening, I'm, I'm totally unconcerned and offer my support wholeheartedly. Um, and, um, yeah, I think I, I agree with Nancy, like maybe change the wording of the letters like that so that people aren't so concerned in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I'll just be brief. Um, sometimes round pegs are being pushed into square holes. When Eric hears, all right, let's go back. So there's a zoning ordinance that in the collective minds of those who wrote it, that thought it was important to define a kennel as a structure that holds more than three animals. So anytime, and, and, and Eric interpreted that structure, that a house could be the same thing. Normally we get real requests for kennels and neighbors come in to talk about the outdoor fencing and the dogs are being bred and they're being sold. This is not the case. So by, just by the sheer wording of that provision, this comes under it. But if you, now, we are at the end of the road. We're the interpreters. It's our job to send out notice to all of you who are butters as to what exactly the regulation or the ordinance is that, um, that encloses the, the jurisdiction for what's coming before us. That's all we can do. We can't even give an explanation of what we think it means or doesn't. So we're just interpreting and Eric is doing his duty by sending you the notice so that you can come here, not be upset, but so that you know you should come and speak to us. The beginning of the process is with the planning board and or yourselves, and then your counselors. So you as citizens have a right, I, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, let's say 10 people, five people.
Ten.
Ten, to make a proposal to the zoning board through your counselor who maybe will sponsor it. That says, well, maybe we should have another thing that says special permits for people with more than three animals. Although I don't know how we could draw people out, apply for special permits because why would they tell anybody if they have more than three animals? But, so I think that's one of the reasons that this happens is that you have a big fish net and you have a shrimp and you have, you know, you're collecting this opportunity, which means that it's drawn out that Kim has four animals, which is more than three. Therefore she needs to come public with it and go through this process, which then gets everybody into the position you're in because there is not a real good clarity of connection until this moment, when everybody comes in here and speaks to us and we then sandpaper down what's happened. So I'm not, what I'm telling you is not a, an excuse. It's more of a reality. So if you, if all of you think that this is an opportunity to amend the zoning bylaw, then talk to your counselor, see if your council will sponsor an amendment. It would then go through the planning board. There'd be public hearings. It would then go to the council. And if it were approved, the next time this happens, it would be under that particular ordinance. And we would be listing to it as a blah, blah, not a kennel. So it's just that that word is normally the way that this stuff gets before us, but this is not one of those situations.
Here, here.
Some correspondence?
Some correspondence.
Memorandum from dated August 15, 2024, fire for trainings development for this particular application of comments. This is a note to whom it may concern from Celine, a mater. I am writing in support of my neighbor, Kim Zabik's application for kennel permit, given the addition or of an additional pet puppy to their household. I am not a person who enjoys dogs and would likely be the first person to cross, be cross with about disruptive animals living nearby. However, it is clear that Kim, Jen and family take good care of their pets and create no. it is clear that Kim, Jen, and family take good care of their pets and create no nuisance, no noise. In fact, I thought they only had one dog. I'm happy. I'm happy to recommend them for a kennel license as close neighbors and community members. This is from June, Valentine Fort, regarding the application for a permit to allow four pets at this location. I have no objection, but I would object to an outside kennel. I have been advised that there are no plans for a kennel. I understand that permit does not transfer when the property is sold. This is a letter from Nancy Keith, who I read for. This is from Chris Miller, kind of a follow up. Here are my concerns. If the zoning board of appeals grants a kennel permit to this address, please share with the with the board. I will. Will the applicant be able to build an outdoor kennel at a later date? And if so, where would it be put? Will this set a precedent for future owners of this residence to be granted a permit for an outdoor kennel in our residential neighborhood? Thank you for your time, Christine Miller. Becky McIntyre, we have lived in Greenfield for the last 13 years. We have the pleasure of watching our neighbors change and grow over the years. We have seen Kim and Jen Zabix's family continue to grow over time. We have recently added to their family with an addition of a dog. Their home and our family is well kept. Their home and family is well kept, and we have no problem with another dog in the neighborhood. Thanks, Becky McIntyre. This is to the Greenfield zoning board of appeal from Blue Ben Ezra. I am writing on behalf of Kim and Jen Zabix, only homeowners at 219 Miller Street, excuse me, High Street in Greenfield. Is my understanding that because they have added a new puppy to the household, they may need to register as a kennel and need feedback from the neighbors about this opportunity. Our family has lived at 225 High Street over for over the past four years and being became close with Kim and Jen's family very soon after coming into the neighborhood. They are welcoming and inviting and have beautiful and loving home with the kids and dogs. Our families have taken care of their dogs when they when they're away and can share that their home is immaculate and their dogs are loved and cared for. Olive, their almost one-year-old, has played with our dog and is very sweet. I have no doubt the new puppies will be welcome in addition to the community. There has never been a time I recall when the dogs have when the noise level from the house is concerning. This is a lively and busy area of our families and animals, and their family and animals are welcome participants. Thank you, Lev Ben Ezra. This is from Roxanne Wieder Gardner, to whom it may concern. The first paragraph says all wonderful things. The second paragraph, notwithstanding the state law and Greenfield code slash zoning ordinance, I have never been a fan of requiring a homeowner with canine family pets to get a kennel license. The license and subsequent inspection should be restricted to individuals who operate a business that requires kennels for boarding or breeding or both. In this neighborhood, a budding my yard at Haywood Street, some families have chickens that are far noisier than the dogs. There are cats that roam free at night and kill other creatures such as birds, squirrels, chipmunks, which provide enjoyment, enjoyment to us. I look forward to hearing about a positive outcome from the board of from the board on the Zabix's license request. Best regards, Roxanne and Richard Wieder.
What did you just say about? Oh, were you? Are you now in a position where you have to get a kennel license and are going to be inspected as though you are a kennel?
No, I'm not.
No one has ever no one has no one has ever said that through this process that you have to go through that process?
What's the question?
Doesn't have to go. If we were to allow this request, it wouldn't would have put Kimberly in a position where she would need to then get a kennel license and have those kennel inspections.
Yeah. Now, this special permit approval is also needs to keep the fourth dog.
Under master law?
Under municipal zoning ordinance.
Well, I know, but don't if we don't say, do we have to follow master law?
But she's not opening a kennel business. She's just getting permission to have the fourth dog, to have the home. He granted a special permit to serve as a kennel to house the four.
I don't know. I don't know. This was the sticky point. It's very ambiguous. Like, you know, they say if you have a kennel, then you have to be inspected.
I have a question about which takes which which carries the most weight, what the special permit or mass general law? I think that the. Her question is confusion over if the mass general law says X, are we allowed to say Y?
So the only thing I can respond to that is that I have to make an assumption because the mass general law defines the animal kennel as four or more dogs. And our local ordinance says three or more. So it has been in place since 89 or maybe even longer. Therefore, I have to assume that municipalities in this case can be stricter than the mass general law.
Oh, we would be less strict.
More strict is what the the state's saying, four or more dogs. So you can have four dogs and not be a kennel animal kennel. So we're saying if you have more than three in Greenfield, you need animals. So it's more strict.
Three or more or four is the same.
The state is four or more.
Thank you.
It's confusing.
Yeah, please, let please let me recognize you to speak. I'm happy to do it, but no, the blurring is. So the definition of kennel is a small shelter for a dog or cat. So that's not very helpful. Okay. It would be, no one from the city has said anything to you about that?
No.
Okay. So we will we will and we will deal with that in our decision. We will talk about it, about whether the word kennel in the request for special permit triggers any other activity. Okay.
Okay. Does that mean I have to get a business?
It means that we will address it.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, in the past, it's clear that it doesn't trigger anything else.
Oh, let's make it clear.
Yeah, I think we've had.
We can make we can make it. We can make it more. We can make it more clear.
I'm just saying, I'm making it clear now. It doesn't trigger.
I understand. I just wanted to make sure that was raised and discussed.
Mr. Chair, since this is a public document, I better read the entire letter.
Sure. Is there something now in the top part?
Yeah, I I need to make sure it gets read into the record.
Okay, go ahead.
And this is to whom it may concern and members of the zoning board of appeals. I am writing on behalf of myself and my husband, Richard Wieder Gardner, to support Kim and Jen's Zabix's request for a kennel license at their 219 High Street residence. We reside nearby at 85 Hastings Street and are very familiar with the Zabix and their dogs. The dogs are quiet, well behaved, and not nuisances. Kim and Jen are extremely caring and responsible dog owners and are quite mindful of the non-inconveniencing their neighbors with their dogs. We are also quite, we are also dog owners ourselves, many of the residents of Hastings Street, High Street and the other neighborhood streets. If Kim and Jen choose to have four dogs, two small dogs and two young older retrievers, this is a choice that should not require them to go through the permitting slash licensing process. And then the next paragraph, it's just, I just want to make sure I write everything into the.
Thanks. Appreciate it. That's helpful, based on what we were just talking about. Okay, anybody on Zoom? Anything else you want to say? Okay, thank you. Dead ends are public hearings. Anybody? Do you need a break?
Yeah.
You do? Okay, let's take a five minute break. After the five minutes, we're going to come back and deliberate.
Ladies room.
Code right behind you outside. Yeah.
Thank you.
Not be dangerous. Those workers here.
Excuse me, everyone. Let me get started again.
Here's the deal. If you want to talk, which is fine. Shut aside, less fine. You can't talk, but please, we're deliberating, and it'd be helpful if you did not. Thank you. So the first one, talk about a request for a special permit. Why don't we make a motion? Make a motion?
Are you ready for me?
Yeah, it's just so we can and we'll discuss it within the motion. No, you want to talk first? Look, you can talk first. That's fine. What do you want to talk about?
Well, I I've got two issues, but I'm weighing both ways here. One, it's a rooster that has been living in this home with these other chickens for for four years. It's a living breeding animal. But it's also not currently within within the purview of being allowable, and it is affecting the neighbor. So that's what I would like to say. I'm not sure. I'm unclear on this one.
Eric, my next door neighbors have chickens. And when they first got the chickens, they got them from one of the suppliers in town, and they got half roosters and half chickens. They thought they were getting all hens. Well, they didn't. They did finally get rid of all roosters, and then they moved on to another batch of chickens and got, again, roosters mixed in with hens, because it's very difficult to sex accurately a baby chick that's just a day or two old. My concern with this is that if we allow a rooster here, then we're setting a precedent for future chicken razors, that it's okay to have a rooster. And being woken up at 4:30 in the morning, for me, was not acceptable. I'm lucky because the neighbors got rid of the roosters. But I think the issue here for us as zoning board is that precedent. I think we'll be talking about that again or about another, the dogs.
Okay, thank you.
I have the exact same experience. The house across the street had chickens and roosters. Luckily, they they got rid of them and the noise stopped. But they were up at the butt crack in the morning, and throughout the day, they were crowing across the street and did not stop. And they roamed all over the yard too. So.
The only way we could deal with this would be move on the chicken coop, the other end of the property, and keeping the rooster locked up until eight, nine o'clock in the morning. That might help.
I I kind of agree in terms of the quandary. I'm absolutely not without sympathy to the family. Like, you're bound with this animal, then you find out that this all of this rigmarole needs to happen. Now, here we are. I completely appreciate the sentiment around precedent. I guess for me, the one potential distinguishing feature here is the fact that there there is room to move the coop closer to a neighbor who has gone on the record saying they love it and have no problem. And that there might, you know, there could be other places where that's that's not going to play out, and that might be the reason for the rejection. Flip side to that is it sounds like moving this coop, one, is an experiment. We don't know if it's still going to please the butter who's currently not happy with the noise. It would all be a gamble. And so I'm a little leery to to grant some approval with some conditions around moving when even if it's kind of blocked by the actual house or whatnot to provide some sound barrier, it might still not give the aggrieved neighbor what she needs. And that gamble, sounds like it would come at some considerable financial expense and labor and may not pay off. And I don't know if that's something that the applicants would want to even then bet to. So I guess there's a piece of me that feels like I would be open to negotiating something around moving the coop if other if other members were as well. But I certainly wouldn't just grant an approval for a special permit for everything to continue as it is when there is a neighbor who's who's not pleased. So depending on the will of this group, I don't know, we could talk about it, but I recognize that even trying to come up with that compromise, I don't know, maybe it's not even a smart thing to attempt in terms of the cost and the effort and that there is no guarantee that it's going to address the other neighbor's concern.
Yeah, that's kind of my quandary.
And my observation of the neighbor, she was pretty stressed out. I mean, you can tell that it's affecting her. And she's still, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, I'm just indicating, watching, you know, what's what happened. I'm empathetic to that.
Yeah. So I think it's reasonable to have a zoning ordinance that says if you have like five acres of land, you can only have a rooster under special permit because the issue of noise is is a very important piece of having a rooster. Because of the fact that it's about, each situation is different, we would not set precedent by allowing a rooster here and not allowing a rooster there unless we unless we just ignored trying to make this a situation where the noise didn't affect the neighbor. So to me, the issue here is I would grant a special permit if I knew if a condition could be placed on the property, a reasonable condition, that the rooster would not be disturbing the neighbor. So I I was hoping that the applicant would be able to come in and say, you know, for the last three weeks, we've done this, it's worked, everything's better. That's not the case. So I went online, I looked up some different solutions. There's the collar, there's moving the is moving the coop. But if the noise is still loud enough, then I don't think we've properly granted the special permit, because I think once the noise, once a neighbor's quiet enjoyment is affected, then the the special permit, in my opinion, if it can't be relieved, needs to be rejected. So I don't, we don't have anything in front of us. So we don't really have the time. And I don't want to get into negotiating too hard about it. We've there is, I could ask you about the neck, the collars. Have you tried the collars on the on the rooster? The you have not?
You have not. And the feedback we've gotten was inconsistent for a time. So we got a little feedback and then we thought we were on the right track. Then we didn't get any feedback. And I think there's a seasonal component in here because of roosters so many summer and windows.
Yeah, okay.
So.
So I don't, I don't, I mean, I need a little help with, I would say, yes, if we could impose a condition that we felt would alleviate the problem, number one. And then number two, I feel like, based on other experience, recent experiences that we've had, since we don't know if it would work, we might want to make it a temporary special permit and have it come back if if there's still, you know, if there's still problems. And at that point, we can decide whether the special permit continues or it doesn't. That's all I can think of in terms of remedies. So or or maybe we don't have enough votes to do it. But I would vote yes if if it was if there was a if we condition it on solving the problem as best we could. And Dawn's here, so maybe she could weigh in when we if we're going to have that conversation. And then a temper, a time period, like six months, three months. Maybe it's not practical, but that's I would only do it as a temporary condition, a temporary permit.
I would, you just based on, we have something similar, not exact, but similar upon Highland Ave. And yeah, I my inclination is to vote is would be to not not allow permit in this situation. You know, based on this, the same thought process I had for that one, I would be willing to talk about a temporary permit to see if they could work out a resolution. I would certainly like to, you know, be open to compromise, but, you know, there's an issue with the noise, and it's not currently, it's not allowable. So I I think we need to address the concerns before we can allow it.
Anything else? I mean, if you can offer something that would convince us that the noise would not disrupt your neighbor and you're going to do it, that would be a good thing. Otherwise, we're going to impose something or we're not going to vote yes. So this is, I'm giving you a chance to decide what you want to do, and we're willing to listen.
Yeah, it would it would definitely require an increase in communications and what we're getting to find out what's working and what isn't working, which is something we've had struggles with already. One of the things that was mentioned, and I am mindful to it, is that he also grows during the day. Is that a problem? I mean, it's it's the daytime.
Is there is there a noise or incitating?
And so I got I need I was thinking more about exactly what I was solving. Because if the problem had come to us instead of the city, I could have done things like being like, hey, you know, why don't we get you a window air conditioner? Is that helpful? We'll pay for it. You know, I feel I feel for people, you know, what can we do? Because it does seem to be primarily, or at least from the information we're getting, summertime. And I'm mindful to that. I also sleep with windows open. Our last bedroom in the house is a similar distance.
I just want to say this, and I'll let Dawn talk if she wants.
Yeah.
From from, I think, the position of the zoning board, the neighbor really doesn't have to do anything. This is really, this is really on you. You are, I just, you have a rooster. the neighbor really doesn't have to do anything. This is really, this is really on you, you, you are, I, I just, you have a rooster. The reason we have this ordinance is because they make noise and, and under five acres of land is presumed it's going to affect in a butter.
Yeah.
Once you found out about it, it was incumbent upon you to figure out how you're going to make this better. If your neighbor wasn't communicating with you, then you could have come to us as an intermediary and told us this is what, this is what we're thinking of doing. So the only, so the only other one thing we could do, we do not have to make a decision tonight. Well, if we say no, you couldn't, it would be, a rooster would go and it sounds like the chickens would go. So that's, or whatever.
Why we would rehome.
But the rooster would go, you, you wouldn't be able to come back for a request for a special permit like this for two years. So it's, it's, Dawn, are you listening to this stuff? Dawn on Zoom? All right.
No.
Uh, well, she could still hear me. Uh, or maybe she's, you're right, maybe she's talking and we don't hear her. So um, I, I, again, I, I, I'm not, I'm doing this neutrally, but it's really a part, it's really on them to tell us what they're going to do to make it, to make it better. I mean, we could impose a, if you want to impose a condition on moving the coop, but we don't know if that's going to work, so.
Yeah, I, I want to solve the problem. So I want to be able to understand exactly what we're trying to solve for. No, no crowing before this time, it makes it easier for us to troubleshoot, get feedback, make sure we're actually solving it. I would hate to spend a lot of effort, thousands of dollars, not solve the problem and have her still be miserable.
I agree.
And then have to get rid of the rooster.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
There was a question on the noise ordinance. There is a general noise ordinance. It says no loud noises between ten PM and seven AM. So maybe after seven AM, after seven AM, anybody can make as much noise they want with any reason. So seven AM may be the timeframe.
So if we can get him to stop crowing between four and seven in the morning.
Well, between the times, Eric. Yeah, I guess, like, thank you, Eric. I guess that's, yes, that's, that's.
But to add on to that, noise ordinance, one to one, ten to seven, during the day, there's the ordinance also in the case that if that noise is disruptive or creates a problem, that, that's an issue.
Right. Can't keep, it can't keep happening all the time.
Can't keep happening all the time.
While, right.
So, you know, I can, again, I respect that, but I've read it enough. You know, you can't create nuisance. And I think that's what's going to happen with this, you know, so.
So what do people, how do?
That's the information I was hoping for right there. We didn't want to solve for the wrong.
Yeah, understood.
Can you talk more about a temporary special permit? I've never encountered that in my time on this board. So it had, we, we.
Well, it'd be a permit that had a, that had a, had a condition that it would come, I mean, I think we talked about, it would come back in a period of time that we define. Unless they told us they were in agreement and we didn't, they didn't have to come back, but if, if there was, but they would be scheduled to come back three, six months. And then.
Progress report or this?
Well, or to see if we would have another, we would have another hearing more or less about whether the noise is still.
But, but, excuse me.
Yeah.
But unfortunately during that period, the, the, the neighbor still hearing, still putting up with it.
I, I understand. I, I, I can't disagree with you. Again, that's why I would have rathered there was a solution that was, you know, but again, I understand your constraints, but be that as it may.
We're also trying to kind of broker this in terms of just getting a sense of vote count. I don't know. If you guys aren't amenable, any kind of a condition that we don't even need to put this time into it because the numbers aren't in play.
You asked me my vote, no. I don't know what the rest of the board feels, but for me.
Well, I think it would.
My inclination is to say no.
Okay.
Okay.
And let's, uh, let's make a motion. We have, we make the motion, do we approve the application of? And then it sounds like, then we vote.
You just get it.
I'd like to make a motion for the application of Amber Fox, a property located eight oh eight Cole Rain Rowen Assessor's Map, I thirty four lot sixty one, which is located in the rural residential zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections two hundred dash four point two C one and two hundred dash eight point three of the zoning ordinance in order to allow the keeping of a rooster at this location, a family pet at this location.
Did you start us to approve the application of?
No, I just said, you know.
No, all right. Can we amend it? The motion is to approve the application of.
Excuse, well, the, the motion, Mr. Chairman, would be to disapprove.
No, I want, I'd like it to be approved so that we could vote no.
Oh, no. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah. I make, I make a motion to approve the application of Amber Fox for property located at eight oh eight Cole Rain Rowen Assessor's Map thirty four lot sixty three, which is located in the rural residential zoning district for a special permit, permit pursuant to sections two hundred dash four point two C one and two hundred dash eight point three of the zoning ordinance in order to allow the keeping of a rooster as a pet at this family location.
A second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say. I believe Peter, Jim. Okay, I'm, I'm not going to vote. Stay. Okay, so by four to zero, the.
Of the, of the application.
All right. So.
Well, we have the party to get.
You know.
I, I don't know. It is a.
Are you, what's a reasonable amount of, what would be a reasonable period of time?
I mean, they have, I mean, their intent definitely is to, is to rehome them. Yeah, but this will probably be three, four, five, open, hello.
What's thirty, forty five?
The inspector buildings typically in certain situations give sixty days, if that reasonable.
That, that seems, sixty days seem right to me.
All right, folks.
Thank you for doing the right thing and come forward.
After eighty. Yes.
It's my thing. You have two unregistered cars and drive.
Next one. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would not, I would not approve you of that one.
Okay. Let's move on, please.
Walk trail.
Uh, yeah, uh, can we, is there any discussion you want to have about Simone's application for her special permit?
No, I think it's a good trip.
Any conditions? Per the app, how about per the application, you know, condition that she.
I was in operation. I know.
Go ahead. I was. It's so close to being a use allowed by right that.
Just one thing we should talk about.
But I, but I, but I would like, I would like it to be connected to the application, you know, that whatever goes on there is done based on the presentation.
Presentation in the application, yeah.
Okay, I hear, uh, it's a, so be it approved the, to make the application for the, no, motion.
Excuse me. Make the motion to approve the application of Simone Westford for property located thirty Mohawk Trail, Unit B Assessors Map forty three, lot thirty two, which is located in the central commercial zoning district for special permits pursuant to sections two hundred dash four point one B four, two hundred dash eight point three and two hundred dash eight point four of the zoning ordinance in order to allow medical foot clinic at this location with the following conditions.
Okay, um, second. I'll second it. So I'd add the condition that, you know, per, per the submitted application and representations made at the zoning coordinator.
Um, yeah, do we want to change or, or expansion of use requires them to come back? Like if she adds additional services, we, you can have her come back.
What do you think, Eric?
Typically not put on, you know, as a condition, kind of, that's it. Because the, you know, as per submitted and as represented at the meeting, so that's clear.
Okay.
I would think, yes.
I'll just go because I'm going to be overly cautious.
No, well, I, I, I don't mind adding that as, you want to, if you want to put language.
No, and. All under the same.
Oh, yeah, with our, I don't, that's our duty, each of us come about it differently. There's no harm in putting words in that permit that say what you just. So if you want to put another condition, I'll let you be the author of that, those, that condition.
Any, any, I guess, any addition, any additional services that are not current, that are going to be added that are not already covered in the.
Any expansion or change of use.
Okay.
Require the applicant to come back to the zoning board.
You know, maybe, you know, I realize it's all foot care, but maybe at some point she wants to expand and offer.
Well, the expansion would require a special permit because it's an expansion. The special permit acts like, uh, like the non-conforming use. So, okay. Anything else? Okay, all in favor of the motion as amended by the two conditions, please say aye. Any opposed? But the record reflect that it was unanimous decided, five to zero. Okay, the next one I will not be discussing, so I, I can, I can manage it, but I won't be. So go ahead, Peter.
I would like a motion to approve the application of Isaac Pass for property located three sixty one Main Street Assessor's Map fifty one lot seven, excuse me, lot ten, which is located in the central commercial CC zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections two hundred dash four, B four and two hundred dash eight point three of the zoning ordinance in order to allow the installation of digital poster boards for the garden to access. The following.
Obviously, as per the plans submitted, including the two additional documents that we received during the meeting. And Eric has probably believed in both of those.
Do you need a second? Was that a question that I just figured out?
Something that there.
You need a second.
The definition.
Yeah.
Yes. And I'd like to make a, set a condition that the digital equipment be maintained, provide reliable.
Provide what?
Provide reliable and consistent, consistent or continuous service for the life of the digital.
Did you get that, Eric?
I got the, the, the digital equipment shall be maintained.
Provide reliable and continuous operation, reliable, continuous, yes.
Do we want an operating condition? It seems to me kind of common sense that probably the posters would go off when the marquee goes off, but would people feel more comfortable having it written in the permit itself?
What are the things that, that Isaac indicated is that they stay on until the last year or one, was it the last?
Connected to the marquee as opposed to ten o'clock at nine. That's what I'm saying. If I would just kind of think like when you shut down the marquee, you're probably not going to pay the energy bill to keep all of your lights going elsewhere.
The marquee.
So if people want it as a condition, I would support it, but I don't.
I'm going to get it as a condition. When the marquee shuts down, the outside door will age. So it's not on all night.
That's why you would do shut the marquee down.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. But the record show was unanimous.
Yeah, I'd like to take care of my life.
Make a motion for the application of Peter.
So I, I, I don't, I just, I just want to make sure. You, you make a motion for us to approve.
Yeah, that's, that's okay.
Make a motion to approve the application of Peter J. Diamond for property located at three oh nine Cole Rain Rowen Assessor's Map, I twenty six lot ten, which is located in the rural residential RC zoning district for special permit pursuant to sections two hundred dash six point one C, two hundred dash eight point three and two hundred dash eight point four of the zoning ordinance in order to allow the renovation, expansion of the existing garage on a legal, non-conforming lot that does not meet the current frontage area and setback requirements at this location.
Second.
With the following, which in, in combines with the application as submitted.
Well, I think it has to be per the application and plans ever submitted.
Yeah.
I just want to have a little discussion for the record that because this property was built and it's not only the testimony of the applicant, but Eric also looked through the records. Because this house was built before zoning was enacted in Greenfield. I don't think that the non-conforming size of the lot is the issue. I think it's the non-conformity of the setback. It's a very small setback. We have in the past continued non-conforming setbacks for construction. I think a one point four two foot setback is pretty small, so I wanted to make sure I looked at it, at that issue carefully. But it's next to a farm. I have to assume that farm is going to, is either, is probably in preservation or is going to be a farm for a while. So the farmer isn't going to be harmed by the one point four two, uh, you know, so there is no substantial change or harm to the neighborhood by this request. So based on that, I think we can approve this request for special, for, for those reasons, we can approve a one point four two setback uh, because it, it exists already with the current garage. Where's? There is a, there, there, there is a technicality though, when you, if you tear, if you tear down the first garage that's there, you said you were intended to do that.
Whatever.
Yeah, I think you need to, to, I would either keep the first garage there or just expand that footprint or keep part of the garage there and expand that footprint. Because once you tear down the garage, you've lost the non-conforming nature and somebody could complain that that's, that you suddenly just gave up your rights. So I would suggest that, that first garage gets some attention in terms of staying constructed close to what it is now.
Is there a way you can give me that detail to, to keep?
The building inspector should be able to give, you, you can, if, and if, if he says, what did David Singer mean by that, people call me, but that's been my understanding. So I don't want, I just want you to know that we're not approving you demolish the entire garage. Just once you do that, you'll lose your footprint and fathering. Okay, so you have to learn yourself how to do it. I, I'm not the enforcer. That would be the building inspector, but I want you to be aware when you go in with your designs, you don't want to destroy the first garage. Okay.
I guess my basic one condition is that the roof runoff that goes there is acceptable to the, the neighbor. Peter did say that.
But how, so would he have to get a?
Just, I just, it's, it's, it's in, it's in agreement with, because he indicated the neighbor didn't have any problem.
Okay.
I just want to condition that statement. That's what was said.
All right. Do you think your neighbors would be able to put, would, how about approve the plans? No, that's, I don't want to do that.
My neighbor came over, Chuck United's came over and said he didn't have a problem. I'm sure I can write up a letter and have him sign it. Okay.
Well, I don't think, well, I mean, if we condition it, that it's the neighbor.
So you have the neighbor to come in and say what's going on, that would be, all right.
Drain the water on his property.
Yeah. I mean, it is farmland, so I don't, I think the farmer, yeah. That's fine. No, I, I'm.
Some, I mean, I'm good with you. There's no problem, but I'd prefer the neighbors to say, yeah, it's okay to take that.
I think a letter is sufficient for that, just so we have it on record that he spilled that.
Have the letter sent, have it, Peter. I have, whatever communication happens between you, have it sent to Eric.
I understand.
Because you, if it's in the record and then that land were to be sold and, you know, looking at the special permit, they were to say, well, I, I don't know if my predecessor ever did anything, you might as well have it in the public record.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Uh, okay, we have that one condition. Any other conditions? All, all, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That the record reflected was unanimous. You have a pretty special permit. I haven't been telling the other applicants, but people do have, there is a twenty day period that people have a right to appeal this once it's delivered to the clerk. Those twenty days are not business days, they're continuous days. And if somebody, if you were to get a building permit and start to construct and somebody filled it, then your work would be halted. So you might want to wait until the, Eric, I think Eric lets the applicants know when he submits the, submits the opinions, signed opinions to the clerk's office. Discount your twenty one days, let you go in for your building permit.
We've always thought that was business days, but it's not.
And, and that will go to Amber for some reason. If she wants to challenge our decision, she'll be told.
Butters are not directly notified.
Well, I'm talking about. Oh, oh, we're talking about this.
So when she gets a notification, she'll be told for whatever reason she would feel.
Oh, yeah, exactly. The letter has all that. Yes, sir.
Do you, there's a letter that goes from you.
There's a letter, once you guys all come in and sign it and it's clocked in, then the letter goes out the same day saying here's when the peeweeds starts and ends and here's your next day.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Is it too late to add something?
Probably, but what is it?
Well, my associate who, who guides me, I'm most. I was just wondering why, if, if everyone was notified and everyone knew the date to be here. I guess we'll wonder, you know, if anybody had a problem, they'd be here. So.
Well, you know, part of our duty. Well, you know, part of our duty is to, is to try to protect people from the experiences that we have as well.
Okay.
And so I think what Peter was doing is, we know that, you know, maybe, maybe the farmer didn't think of that and, but we did. Cause we have the experience of people not necessarily loving that or feeling like that might be a problem. So that's, we do the things that we have experience doing. So, and, and, so, and, and based on the representation that you made, that it wouldn't be that hard to do. I think that it's, it's a good belt and suspenders thing for us.
If, if you look in section two hundred dash eight point, eight point three, there's a list of criteria.
Right.
That you need to comply with. One of which is if you have an impact on something else, you know, you need to deal with that. And you indicated there was no problem. So, you know, just take a look.
It's a good question, but we, we respectfully, we are not going to change that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care. Okay, the animal.
Please, Peter.
I make a motion to approve the applications in relief. Day back for property located at two nineteen High Street assessors map ninety-two lot twenty-three, which is located in the urban residential RA zoning district. For a special permit pursuant to sections two hundred dash four point four, C seventeen, and two hundred dash eight point three. And two hundred dash eight point four of the zoning ordinance in order to allow. An A kennel, an N kennel permit to keep four dogs at this, as pets at this location.
I'll second that.
Eric. Can we say? In order to allow the applicant to keep four dogs as pets at this location, do we have to use the words animal kennel in our motion?
Yeah, it's officially the use category of the zoning ordinance, which this falls under, but.
Um, can we call it a noncommercial, can we designate the special permit, like that the house is a noncommercial animal kennel?
We, we did one of these before, say, almost the same exact situation. I'm, I'm trying to see if I can find it. But, um. Yeah, we actually limited it to those four dogs. I'm like.
Not even the number, but the actual.
Four dogs as listed and if they lost one, they had and wanted a fourth dog again, they'd have to.
Write those down.
Yeah, it was that. I remember, I remember that one. I mean, we were that specific with it, like you can keep these four dogs. But that was it.
I don't know, that's a good, a good question, Mr. Chairman. Um, I mean. Let's do it, see what happens. There's, there's two reasons to do it, or there's two reasons to do it. One is. We're not allowing an animal kennel. Taking the words out. And secondly, it doesn't trigger the other stuff talked about. Idea that if you do animal kennel, then, then her, then her property is subjected to other requirements.
And we did not, when we did the one on Stuts and Drive, we didn't put any language in there about having get in. We said the dogs had to remain licensed, keep their license active, but we didn't impose any kennel fees or. Call to the kennel, I don't think we referred to it at all.
So, let's make, I'd like to make a motion to amend to strike an animal kennel and to put in its place. And like, allow the applicant to keep four dogs.
Okay, I'll go along with that. Yeah.
You'll second it?
Second it.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
The amendment.
It's just amendment.
Oh, just amendment, okay.
It's important amendment, so I want to make sure. It's not a friendly amendment. It's, it's important. Unanimous, okay. You read the motion, the motion as amended. Second, the motion as amended. Now it's on the table. I have a list. If somebody else has a list, they can read it, but here's my list.
You read your list and I'll let you know if I need.
I, I like to start because I know you have.
Well, I think we're gonna be the same here, but.
Right, does not run with the land. The cat, the, the house is the structure where the animals are kept. Pursuant to the zoning by, I'd call it a kennel. It's just that the house is the structure. The permits for these four dogs, so that if, if. If, if the dog population changed and then new dogs arrived. And it was up to four again, then the applicant would have to come back for a new special permit. And it's been represented that the dogs are family dogs and pets and that, and so. So the condition would be that the dogs are family dogs, pets. That's mine. Go ahead. You have one, you have one.
Again, the only thing I have is licenses, yeah. I mean, I, I know it's the law, but we did include.
The dog licenses, you know?
Yeah. Dog licenses need to be maintained.
Very happy if that was the only condition we put on.
Yes.
Yeah.
By putting that list of restrictions on variance. Special permit, is that in fact protect us? Or as far as the issue with upsetting precedent so that other people would, who have a fourth dog. Would come, would come forward and expect.
Again, I just want to, I, I want to, this is my understanding of the concept of pressing. Yes, there will be people that might come in here and say you didn't, then why can't you? That's not precedent. Precedent is when you have to do it for someone else because we did it for the purpose. Under the zoning, my understanding of zoning law is, I mean, a complaint could be made that two situations were exactly the same. We allowed one, we denied another, therefore we're being arbitrary and capricious in denying the application of another person. But if we do our homework with each application and make it clear that this application, this permission is being granted. Because we, because we're imposing conditions that seem to be acceptable to the neighbors, that's not precedent. We might use these again because they're handy tools for us to put into other special permits. But unless somebody could say that, you know, we just were biased against the next person and we're arbitrary and capricious. We do not have to allow a special permit the next time, if the circumstances are similar. But we find a reason, a good faith and shocker reason. I just want to, so the word precedent, there are, there are other problems. You're addressing a problem that's a real problem, but it's not fault precedent.
Okay.
It's more called people's, you know, reactions to how we govern and. Maybe sometimes telling us that we are being biased, but as long as they're not being biased, they're allowed to take each case as. And that, that, Eric, right?
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
The other, the other question that I have is regarding noise. And I'm making the assumption that when the zoning laws were first drawn up, they said. Oh no, we can't have more than three dogs in any one location because dogs are gonna start dog bark. And what do you do about a barking dog situation? And, or what do we do if we give this permit and these dogs. Change from the being the wonderful family pets that they are now into being barking dogs that disturb the neighbors. But what's the recourse for the neighbors under those circumstances?
I would say the recourse would be the same as it would be for any dog, whether they had one dog that was barking. Or four dogs that was barking. The permit is about a line with these four dogs. A barking dog is a, to me, is a different, is a different situation, a different problem.
Animal.
I mean, I, I think that your point is probably just that with each increase of dog, there's an increase in likelihood of barking. So I get that, but I do think that we heard that these dogs are primarily indoors, uh, that they're not really outside unattended. You know, and, and dogs are gonna bark sometimes. And, and yet, and so many people turned out to say like, we really dig this family and their dogs, so.
And I wasn't arguing that we should turn it down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I get it.
But you have, you have, I, I think your point is, is well taken. I think Debbie's response is, she's drawing a line that's saying, you know. The, you could have one dog that's really loud, you could have four dogs that have a reliance of us to assume that four dogs will make noise and impose a condition. I'm not saying that we shouldn't, but that, that's what I think she's saying. So I would ask you, you have language that you think would be fair. We're, we're back to the noise thing, you know, like how, when's it noisy? And do we want to be the arbiter? We want to be the arbiters of that.
I can leave that to the dog.
We need a bold on this.
I mean, I think that's, I, 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 in all seriousness, I, I think that's the, that this, that it's. Three dogs, four dogs, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think it's enough. I, I don't think it's within our jurisdiction in this case. Unless, unless we heard something that made us think that noise was an issue. So I'm feeling like. Everybody agree?
So, let me ask the, the question again about. Why, why did this, why did the, I was decided originally to say in the zoning ordinance. Limit this to three and not four.
Because whatever this group was, or whatever the planning board was at that time thought it made sense.
No, I, 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 I don't, I don't, I want to give you, again, everything's a bouncing test, you know, you're, so. Three was probably because of the kennel law, the numbers, and also, once you get past three. It's important for it to come out into the public domain that somebody wants four dogs. So if there had been ten people here that said those dogs are the loudest dogs ever. If they're three dogs, we don't get to put a condition on they're having four dogs, right? And so it just gives us a chance, okay, four is the time that this board can sit in here. And decide whether under those circumstances, it's appropriate. That's why, that's why it's not there because you're supposed to then think, oh, we should restrict it. It's more to hear the whole situation. And to make a decision based on what we hear and trust it. So.
I accept that.
Okay, so I think, I think we would be. You know, if, if, if we get burned, then the next poor person who comes in with four dogs is gonna have a noise condition.
But that will not be arbitrary. That would be lessons, it would be lived experience.
It just happened in the, I live next to a kennel. But they fight the two pound dogs, German Shepherds, Saint Bernards, all of them. But they don't bark continuously, it's a noise complaint. I have those.
We haven't actually heard it.
No, we haven't.
And Mr. Chairman, can I even feedback, this is, make sure you get it right. A special permit shall not run with the land.
Right. Runs with the applicant.
Yeah. Okay, and the other is only four dogs shall be allowed. When one dog expires, it shall not be replaced with a new dog.
Oh, the number, yeah, or the numbers go down, if the numbers go down to three for any reason, uh, then to go back to four will require another special. It's not a, it's not a revolving door.
Kind of a situation. And then this, the house is the structure where the dogs are housed. I don't know, that's a good word, housed. Okay, uh, let's see. And the applicant shall maintain the dog's license.
And it's the, the permits for family dogs, pets, that's for family dogs, that's the.
Not for breed. It's in the motion that it's for pets.
Okay, great, thank you. You're right. Okay. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed, abstentions, let the record show that we. The special.
We have to accept the minutes.
So, Kimberly, so there's a. There, this twenty day period for people to appeal our decision. That doesn't begin until we file the appeal with the clerk of, uh, with the clerk of the city. Most of the days are over. You already have the dog anyway, so it really doesn't matter, so. Once the twenty days have gone by, you're set. Okay? Right.
Um, Mr. Chairman, so. What, once the board signs it and it gets clocked in with the city clerk, a letter gets sent to you saying that in twenty days, you can go. To the city clerk's office, pick up the decision and report it at the registry of deeds. That's what you'll have to do.
Uh, I guess, although it's not, runs, doesn't run with the land, but you can record in the, so. Because your house has been given this permission. If anybody was. Looking at your property records, it was in there, you'd be giving the world notice that the zoning board has allowed you to have four dogs there. But we've really made it only for you, so if you were to sell the house or, and move, it wouldn't apply, so. I, I don't want to say you shouldn't do it, but.
Actually, it's not a valid special permit.
Unless it's recorded.
Ordered at the registry of deeds.
But recorded in the registry. Would the letter tell her to record it in the registry?
Yes, the letter will say that, and there is a cost and it's very expensive. It used to be seventy-five dollars. Now it's a hundred and five dollars to report a document at the registry of deeds.
Registry is in the courthouse.
I need to switch jobs.
You might go into the.
Everybody makes money.
Upstairs, I gotta record this thing, do it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're all set?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For next discussion on fees.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for all coming, everybody.
So what do we have left, minutes?
So, let's do the minutes of July eleventh. Take, somebody.
We do first.
Yet, all right. Make a motion that we approve the, the minutes of the July first, two thousand twenty-four zoning board of appeals meeting.
I'll second, yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show five to zero with vote. I make a motion that we approve the, uh, minutes of the July eleventh, two thousand twenty-four zoning board of appeals meeting. Any discussion? I just want to say to commend Eric. This, these are, these, both of these motions, uh, the fifteenth, I don't have the other one with me, but I remember reading it. But these two especially set a good record for what we anticipate to be coming down the road, so I appreciate your doing. Uh, if I don't have to say it again for the next.
See you in court.
Yeah, well, let's see what they do. But regardless, I'm not great, so. Hearing nothing else from anyone, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Record shows five to zero. Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four zoning of appeals meeting.
I second.
Okay, any discussion?
August fifteenth.
August fifteenth. All in favor?
All in favor, thank you. Any opposed? Let the record show, everybody, five to zero. Uh, anything, any correspondence?
Well, there's a discussion item on your agenda, that is to talk about the fee schedule.
Is that something that we have, have, uh, participated in?
Correct, Mr. Chairman. The last time it was the zoning board, several years ago, that, um, and the planning board both have to agree on the fee change. And so I'm coming to you first because your meeting came first. And the proposed changes are clearly marked out here. Everyone was given this in their packet. Basically, the issue is this. Town, it's costing the town money for people to come in and people apply to the ZBA. It shouldn't cost the town anything, it should cost the applicant. Legal ads have gone up quite a bit in the recorder. The average cost of a legal ad is about a hundred and seventy-five dollars, so three fifty. For two legal ads and then the fees, the application fees, um, it's really. So we'll start off with, uh, I wanted to make this a fee schedule about permits, that. Buying a zoning ordinance or a map, that, that's somewhere else, and I put that somewhere else. So I want to strike anything that doesn't have to do with a permit. So get rid of subdivision regulations, zoning ordinance, and zoning map, buy again. And then amending the actual cost of, for the rest of them. Um, the variance, right now it's a hundred and fifty dollars. It doesn't even cover one legal edge, it'll cost the city. Couple hundred dollars for someone to come in for a variance. It shouldn't cost the city anything. It should increase it so that at least we break even. And that's what I'm proposing here with the variance and the appeal. Because we're losing money. Then, of course, changing the town, work town to city. Last one is major development review. The, the cost was five hundred. Again, the cost is three fifty for two legal ads, no, the three seven, yeah, three fifty plus. Notification of all butters by certified mail, that could be way over five hundred, so.
You just reduce the fee.
Yes, but also the butters.
Two hundred plus the cost.
Plus the cost of the legal, plus the butters, so you were actually.
Instead of just five hundred dollars, uh, as a single number.
Exactly. So this would make us, uh, not cost the city money for people to come in and apply for permits.
Will you be compatible with the rest of the cities around this and cost?
Uh, this will still be way lower than every other Midwestern mass community. Our fees are lower than anybody else.
Okay, the only, the only concern I have is, you know, just people that can't afford to do this. But that, I'll leave that to another group of people to develop a fund, to help people who can't afford it, but I think we have to give just a general. Assent to this.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I agree. I mean, it should not cost the town money and as long as we're covering that and. There's, yeah, we're not, I would also wouldn't want to be making money up with somebody. Doing it just to cover, as long as we're covering our costs.
Yeah, this is covering the city's costs.
Yeah.
And these fees haven't been, the last time it was amended was probably over ten years, about fifteen years. And these fees haven't been, the last time it was amended was probably over ten years ago to fifteen years.
Yeah.
Okay, prices have gone up since then, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Anything else?
No, there's the vote on this. See the vote from the board.
Make a motion that we approve the fee schedule presented to us by Eric Turo.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it's done.
Done. I'll make a motion here.
What's happening with Arch Street?
When did Arch Street get five, you know, when the Arch Street, uh, I think, wait, wait. Let's turn.